Any abstentions? So that's carried, I think.
Chair, that's 33 votes in favour, 22 against, and no abstentions. The motion is therefore carried.
So Agenda Item Number Nine is written motions. Five motions have been submitted. The first motion has been submitted by councillor Ross Hathorn. I understand councillor Hathorn that you have an alteration, so we'll need the consent of the meeting, which needs to be signified without discussion. So all those in favour of accepting the alteration, please raise your hands. That's unanimous, I think. So can I ask councillor Hathorn to move and speak to her motion as set out on pages three and four of the council agenda?
I want to begin by thanking councillor Goldsack for getting in touch with me last week, that this gave us time to talk about the motion, alter the wording, and I've submitted a motion which councillor Goldsack has agreed to second. The county council's carbon report showed that waste was the biggest contributor to council carbon emissions, and at nearly £100 of landfill tax for every tonne going to landfill, plus the PFI contracts for processing waste, waste is also extremely expensive. So if we can reduce waste, that's beneficial to both our carbon footprint and our financial budget. But changing our relationship with waste is not an easy thing to do. We're not going to be able to significantly reduce waste levels overnight. Rather, we need to start reducing the amount of waste we as a county produce gradually and consistently, year in, year out. We need to keep going, percentage point by percentage point. And this motion relates to just one part of the complex issue that waste is. When I was elected to council last summer, a resident approached me and asked if she could get any funding for the repair café training scheme she was running. She just couldn't keep up with the demand from across the county, and just a bit of funding would enable her to offer far more training and support, far more repair cafes. So I started asking if this was possible. When I asked people fairly high up in the council, they were all very enthusiastic, and told me that this was precisely the type of initiative we should be supporting. But as I got closer to the council's funding schemes and started speaking to the officers who run these schemes, it became increasingly clear that this was not, it was not going to be possible to get funding for repair cafes or other reuse initiatives. Officers told me that they'd been trying to get refunding for repair initiatives for the past five years and just couldn't make it work within the council's criteria for funding. Repair and reuse schemes simply do not tick the right boxes to qualify for funding, and only by getting repair cafes to bend over backwards and become something they're not, would they stand a chance of getting funding under current models. During these conversations, it became apparent that to get this started, it might be necessary to ring invent a small sum of money specifically for repair, reuse, recycling and upcycling initiatives, identify the most effective way to use that money, work out if any other council initiatives could be, could work alongside the repair schemes, and also have a process to evaluate what's going on. If this motion is successful today, maybe my residents still won't get funding, maybe other reuse, repair and recycling initiatives will win the funding, but at least the county will be showing their support for the principle of reuse and repair. We face a climate emergency, we need to find ways to support communities to live more sustainably, to support communities who want to reduce and reuse, to fix and repair. We've got to try new things, so that we can reduce our levels of waste and we can live more sustainably.
Thank you councillor Hathorn. Do you have a second, councillor Goldsack?
Yeah, I reserve my right to speak.
Would anybody else like to debate this motion? Councillor Van de Ven.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank councillor Hathorn for bringing this motion forward. I would, I think that her list of things that repair cafes do really is about infectious enthusiasm, and I was really delighted to attend the first repair café in my division last weekend, on Saturday, organised by the Basingbourne Climate and Emergency Groups. And on the day, the repair team there offered to come over to Meldrid, where the Community Rail Partnership for the villages in that area have committed to doing a repair café this year, but needed some templates to get started. And so the repairers from Basingbourne are coming over to Meldrid and couldn't be more enthusiastic. One of the things that came up, though, the real challenges, is insurance. And I wondered when this goes to Cosmic Committee in July, assuming this motion is unanimously passed, which I'm sure it will be, whether, no predetermination, whether the committee could explore efficiencies around insurance. And I'm thinking of National Bike Week, where insurance is provided in a blanket kind of way for cycling groups that want to hold group rides during that timeframe. And I just thought that might be a really helpful addition to all the communities that are looking to hold these cafes. Thank you.
Councillor Beckett, please.
Thank you Chair. In July 2017, the EU Parliament approved recommendations that member states pass laws that give consumers the right to repair their own electronics. While we're unfortunately no longer members of the EU, I'm pleased to say the government finally passed a UK version of the right to repair in July 2021. While in my opinion, this law doesn't go far enough excluding laptops and smartphones, there is no doubt that people are starting to realise the importance of repairing devices rather than simply binning them. With e-waste rising by 21% between 2014 and 2018, that's hardly surprising. I think we all probably have several mobile phones currently sitting at home in drawers, broken. Of course, right to repair only works if consumers have an ability to repair. I was really lucky growing up, in that I have a much older brother who's an electronic engineer, and he taught me to solder before my 10th birthday. Over those years, those basic repair skills and willingness to give it a go have led me to saving thousands of pounds repairing my own devices, and saved many from the bin. My last iPhone was like Trigger's broom out of Only Fools and Horses, having gone through two displays, three batteries, two Bluetooth modules before I finally decided to change. Unfortunately, not everybody has those basic skills or tools required to apply them, and that's where repair cafes come in. Repair cafes first and foremost reduce waste, but they also provide so much more than that, from education and learning to teamwork and community building, giving residents the ability to be able to repair their own devices and learn from experts. Much like hack spaces, repair cafes give a place for people with practical skills to be able to use them to help their own communities. If we want to get on top of this e-waste mountain, saving both money and the environment, then improving the lifespan of devices is key. One of the primary ways of doing that is through repair, and community-led repair really has to be the best way forwards. I strongly support this motion, and look forward to seeing how the council can further support these much-loved and needed repair cafes.
Thank you councillor French.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with this, but I would like to ask councillor a question. You said that you had tried to get funding other ways. There is an Innovate and Cultivate Fund that people can apply for, and there was also the Community £5 million fund that they could have applied for. So I don't understand when you say unless they were totally rejected.
So I think councillor Hathorn can probably address that in her summary up. So thank you for the question. Any other, anybody else like to participate in this debate? Councillor Goldsack, I think.
Thank you Chair. It is a pleasure to second the motion and support councillor Hathorn in her quest. I approached councillor Hathorn on the initial publication of her motion, because whilst broadly supportive, I wasn't happy just to single out repair cafes when other community-led groups fulfil the tasks of saving goods from landfill by repair, up or recycling. However, on the amendment, I am proud to support and push for any group, association or person that is into recycling, upcycling or repurposing. The rise in associations, including repair cafes, mansheds and other great initiatives that bring great positivity to members in terms of mental health, human companionship and focus, and for customers in delivery of equipment repairs and improvements while stopping landfill as the default destiny for most items in our throwaway society, is a wonderful improvement to our communities. I will leave you with one thought on the output of repair cafes, mansheds and the like. On a day when the council has shown solidarity with our friends from Ukraine and our neighbouring countries, imagine the face of a young child that has fled Ukraine and travelled with what family she could, he or she could, and arrived in the UK to be gifted something repaired in our community as a toy or something for them to hold. I think that's a great image and a great support for this. That group builds and donates damaged and now repaired toys, gifts them to these children. The smile on those faces versus additions to local landfill make this a very simple choice to make, and therefore I'm very proud to second this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Hathorn.
So when repair café schemes have applied for the Innovate and Cultivate Fund, they have not been successful in achieving funding. And I have worked closely with officers, and the way you apply for the Innovate and Cultivate Fund, by my understanding, is that you do need to work with officers and you listen to their advice, and in some schemes, they would just say this is just not viable. And that was the message that we have been getting upon the repair, on the repair café application. And this was from a number of officers across different parts of the council. So that is why I've brought this, this motion about repair and reuse to full council, so that we can establish that it is something the council supports and looks to, look at ways to supporting it. And the comments about insurance, I've heard those as well, and it would be wonderful if they could be considered if this motion is successful. So this motion is about responding to the climate emergency, and about moving away from a disposable culture, and about finding new ways to live. Changing how we live is not all about loss and hardship. Repair, reuse and repurpose mean we can extend the lifespan of items we love, get more from them and save money. This motion is about listening to our communities and supporting them in the repair and reuse initiatives they want to establish. It's about beginning a conversation about what can be.
The next motion is submitted by councillor Alex Bullatt. Can I ask councillor Bullatt to move and speak to her motion as set out on pages four and five of the council agenda?
Chairman.
Sorry councillor Schuman.
Chairman, if I may, a point of order under the council procedure rule 10.3 as amended today. Can I ask the monitoring officer whether we were a statutory consultee in the election bill, or likely or could be a statutory consultee in any future election bill from government's consultation process, and if so, whether we are able to debate this item today considering the earlier decision taken?
Well, as far as I know, the elections bill is in its very late stages, going through the Houses of Parliament at the moment, it's the House of Lords, I believe, at the moment, so at that stage, there's no opportunity for any more consultation to take place. As far as I know, that's, that's the best of my knowledge, but have you got further?
So, and the question, I think, has been asked by colleagues while we're debating it, but secondly, then in a future election bill, we would not be a consultee, is that what you're suggesting? Because if so, then we have to be considering that we've just passed a decision that we would not be commenting on anything we'd be a statutory consultee on in future?
I don't think that the monitoring officer can answer that question about future election bills. I don't think that's a valid point of order. So we're going to move on with councillor Bullatt's motion. Would you like to propose your motion councillor Bullatt?
Thank you, thank you very much Chair. And indeed, as the monitoring officer has been saying, the bill is now in the House of Lords at committee stage, so it's very late stages, it will likely become law quite soon, but yeah, thank you very much for trying that. So every week or every day, for some of us, we meet residents who are not born in the UK in our areas. I personally got asked countless times about who can vote and in which elections in the UK. And I also lost count of how many times I hear activists and even councillors sometimes who wrongly say to someone they can vote, when they can actually cannot vote, or worse, the other way around. Now, I cannot blame people for not knowing the right information, because actually explaining voter eligibility is not the most straightforward thing. So let's see if I can explain this issue to you in under a minute. British, Irish and Commonwealth citizens can vote in all elections, including for Westminster elections, and in local elections, things are a bit more complicated. Because in Scotland and Wales, all residents, including those with refugee status, can vote in all devolved elections. But in Northern Ireland and England, except from those who have the national franchise, so British, Irish and Commonwealth citizens, only EU citizens can also vote in local elections. If, or more accurately, when, given the late stages of the bill, the elections bill becomes law, only EU citizens with pre-settled and settled status, and who arrived in the UK before the 1st of January 2021, so if you're still following me, only those guys will still have the right to vote, will still keep their right to vote. But here's another catch, all this is true, what I said, unless their country of origin has a voting rights bilateral deal with the UK. So what this means is that currently, Spanish, Portuguese, Polish and citizens of Luxembourg who arrives after the 1st of January 2021, but their French, Romanian, Lithuanian neighbours and many others won't. As you can tell, I failed to explain this in under a minute, even with my speaking speed, and on top of that, you'll also need to explain voter ID when the bill becomes law, another provision made by, of course, local authorities will play a role. Now, elections and communications around elections are delivered, of course, on behalf of district councils, so I hope districts will consider similar motions and discussions on what they can actually do at the local level. But meanwhile, the question is, what practical steps can we take as a county? So first of all, we need to work better in collaboration with our districts on this issue, because it would be key encouraging voter registration, because if you think about this, is it really democracy when we have local elections with 20% turnout, or when just under half of EU migrants who can actually vote are even registered to vote, let alone vote? So we have to think about this, rhetorical questions for now. Again, I think we can think about more creative ways, some of those suggested in the debate, voter eligibility, and of course, the issues around voter ID when they, they come into law. This motion includes some practical things we can do, of course, on awareness raising, because whatever happens with this elections bill, we need to be prepared as a county in collaboration with districts to raise awareness of the changes this brings, so we can ensure that no one who actually has the right to vote is prevented from voting. However, apart from those practical steps, I couldn't leave the motion, I just that, because I do believe it's fundamentally unfair that we have a situation in which, let's say, for instance, a Romanian who arrived in the UK before the 1st of January 2021 will be able to vote for their councillor, whereas their family member who arrives after the date and often on the same immigration status will have no say despite paying the same local taxes. I always thought for years it was unfair that non-EU and non-Commonwealth citizens, such as Brazilian or Ukrainian residents, for instance, have no say whatsoever in our local democracy in a formal way, regardless of how long they've been a resident. So the final point in the motion is about the principle that.
Believe that, we cannot bring this motion and we cannot vote on it. And I'm happy to debate and vote on it, as long as an officer is prepared to say that there is no legal or constitutional reason why we can't, because I believe anyone who does so is in breach of the constitution.
Councillor Tierney, I've already ruled on this.
Yes, but Chairman, you don't have the right to overrule the constitution.
Chairman, I'm quite happy to speak on this again. Actually, in terms of the elections bill, there's, there's a House of Commons Public Administration Constitutional Affairs Committee report on the lack of any pre-consultation on the bill, so there was no consultation at all on this bill that took place, and there's no reason why we can't make a decision today.
With respect, that's not what the constitutional amendment said. It said that if we were going to be a consultee, or if we were likely to be a consultee, the motion couldn't be ruled. It didn't speculate what top point in the timeline of current situations are. So we are the consultee on changes to voting rights, and so we can't bring this motion, I believe. But if you're absolutely saying we can, that's fine by me, but that's down to you, I'll then blame you.
Happy to take the blame councillor Tierney. This motion is acceptable.
So you've heard from monitoring officer, you heard my ruling, we are going to debate this motion. I'm confused now. Councillor Prey, I think.
Thank you Chair. For clarity, the proposal which was passed earlier relating to the constitution said that motions may not be related to a planning application or other quasy judicial matter for which the council is a statutory consultee. I don't believe that the elections bill is either a planning application or a quasy judicial matter. It is a process that is going through Parliament. That's not my understanding of a quasy judicial matter, and I would welcome the monitoring officer's comments on that.
Okay, I think for the final time.
It's a judicial matter as opposed to a quasy judicial matter. However, I do not believe that this council was a statutory consultee in relation to this bill. I don't believe there was any consultation at all. In fact, there's been quite a lot of discussion about the consultation that did take place by the government on this.
So once again, you've heard from monitoring officer, I've ruled on this, we're going to continue this debate on the, on the motion as proposed by councillor Bullatt. I prefer not to hear any more questions about whether this or not is a valid motion. We've ruled on this, and we're going to carry on debating this motion. So could you please signify if you'd like to speak on this motion? Councillor Bowden.
Thank you very much indeed Chair. If there aren't any other standing order requests, then I'm more than happy to speak to the motion itself. I read this motion with some degree of incredulity, to be quite honest, and a little bit of amusement. And to read this motion and to listen to councillor Bullatt, you'd be forgiven for not knowing that we have one of the most generous, open and inclusive systems permitting non-citizens to vote in local and national elections, and to stand in local and national elections in the world. Not the most generous, I have to accept, New Zealand is and has been for 60 years more generous, and other countries such as Uruguay, Ireland and Portugal are also more generous, but it is one of the most generous in the whole world. And even the motion which is brought before us displays some degree of confusion. Under this council expresses concern, we're told that Cambridgeshire EU residents who aren't covered by the bilateral treaties, which are currently just Poland, Luxembourg, Spain and Portugal, will not have voting and candidacy rights in local elections after the elections bill is implemented. Well, that's not true. Citizens of Malta, citizens of Cyprus and citizens of the Republic of Ireland will also continue to have voting and candidacy rights, not merely at local elections, but also at national elections. So it's very easy to be misleading about the information which is given, and I do accept that's because the subject is quite a complex one. The default position for most countries, the majority of countries in the world, is that you need to be a citizen of that country to vote and to stand for election. And there are only about 80 countries in the world which allow any non-citizens to vote or stand for election in, in, either at local or much more unusually at national level. And in the UK, we choose to allow citizens of 54 other countries to vote and to stand for election, not just at local elections, but also at national elections. Now, we're no longer members of the European Union, I think all members of this, of this council need to realise that fact, but we choose to allow to continue local election participation from settled EU citizens, and we've gone further, and we've invited EU countries to grant reciprocal local election rights between ourselves and them. And in my view, it's a great shame that only four EU countries have so far taken up that particular offer. So I think this motion is quite misconceived, and I certainly shall not be voting for it. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Singer.
Thank you. I'm really delighted to be speaking in support of this motion. Cambridgeshire is a place which has welcomed people from across the world for many decades, and indeed centuries, and we are immeasurably better off as a country and as a county as a result of the contribution and talents of all those who have come to work, study and live in Cambridgeshire. Our NHS, our universities, our science, tech and agricultural sectors all flourish with support from workers from across the world, and would, and would all struggle without that flow of talent and effort. And I would like to say we have considerable, a number of examples of that in this room today, and they, again, bring their enormous talents and benefit to us. Just as we welcome the contribution to the economic thriving of our country brought by those who choose to move here, so we must also encourage participation in our local and national democracies. The current war in Ukraine is a reminder of just how important a healthy and open democracy is as a bulwark against tyranny and vested interests. The restrictions and mechanisms in, in the elections bill are straight from the Trump-Putin playbook, making it increasingly difficult not only for those who come here from other countries, but also for the less wealthy or more mobile UK citizens to register to vote. 24% of the population are referred to in the briefing note as thought not to have the necessary documentation that will be needed to vote in future. And these are likely to be disproportionately the young, those living in poverty who cannot afford to drive or the luxury of foreign travel, the disabled or the displaced. Deliberately making it more difficult for these groups in particular to access the right to vote is deeply worrying. Councillor Bowden's response that until now, we have had one of the most open voting systems, does not give any reason why at this time, we should be choosing to make it more difficult for those groups in particular to vote, whether you are a UK citizen or living and working and paying taxes of a citizen of another reciprocal nation. There is absolutely no indication of voter fraud in local or national elections in this country, and the demand for a form of photographic ID has not been driven by any widespread public, national or international concern over the reliability of the UK democratic processes. And indeed, the fact that these rules will not be used in Scotland or Wales indicates that the driving force is not concern for our democracy. As a county council, we are determined to represent all of our residents, and to do that, we need to ensure that all those who should have a right to vote know how and what process they need to go to in order to get that vote. So please support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Van de Ven.
Thank you. There are lots of people in this room who have lived in this country for a long time and who have navigated citizenship and voting rights. It is a horrendously complicated thing to do, and is becoming only more so. And I'm aware that since we left Old Shire Hall, we as county councillors are no longer witness to the citizenship ceremonies that take place on a regular basis, and what a powerful witness that, that can be, because you became, you become very aware of the families, the, the human beings that have gone through a complicated, expensive process to complete their lives here. You know, people come here to live and work and contribute, but it's amazing how divorced you can feel from your community life, your civic life, without the, the ability to vote and to be a citizen. So I, from my point of view, this is a very constructive motion which is seeking to strengthen participation and enrich civic life, and that can only be a good thing. So I wholeheartedly support it, and I think councillor Bullatt did very well to get it all in, in, in the time she did, because it is very complicated. Thank you.
Councillor Maschini.
Thank you Chairman. It's not very frequently that my own personal life has a bearing on stuff that we discuss in this council, but today, I am forced to remember when in the summer of 2017, I met my partner. At that point, neither of us were a British citizen. I, an Italian citizen, was a councillor. He, a Norwegian citizen, was not, and is not currently on the electoral register, because until recently, for him to be on the electoral register in this country, he would have to, he would have had to renounce his Norwegian citizenship. Now, that is no, that has very recently no longer become the case. However, obviously, it's not a matter for this country what other governments choose to do in that respect, but it is a matter for this country to try and work out how to make it as simple as possible for their own residents to access democratic services, because we have an absolute duty to make life easier for people. Like my partner, like a lot of people whose doors I knock on all year, every year, and I try desperately to work out, hang on, so what's your passport, where are you from, when did you arrive, as to whether or not you can actually vote in the next local election, of which there are several all the time. I will take any help, any indication that this council is committed to try and make this easier for us, because we are the ones whose lives are made better, whose work is made easier, whose role is made more important by those people being able to truly, not just in spirit, but truly be represented by ourselves in this room today. Thank you.
Councillor Count.
Thank you, Chair, I hadn't got a prepared speech on this motion because I hadn't planned to say that much, but I just wanted to pick up on a couple of points that I've heard during the debate, and I can't support this, and one of the things that concerns me is the lack of concern being shown for the actual anti-fraud measures that are going through in the bill, and whilst everybody says this may make lives difficult, it's not true to say there's been no fraud, I mean, who can forget the 20,000 voters that disappeared off the electoral roll at Birmingham City Council, or the person that discovered a printing factory of postal votes going on at that point in time? These, it's a bit like the £10 note in your pocket, it's not always looked the same, new developments come forward that we can add to the security of various things, and it's important that in order to, so that everybody sitting here today when they stand for the next election knows that they fairly won the right to be here, and that is achieved by actually ensuring that there fraud does not take place, and these measures are meant to help that. Now, in the terms of national citizenship, I'm all for equality, I am, and I don't want this to be confused somehow with any kind of racist motives, because I welcome foreign people coming here, working here, living here, I am of foreign descent myself, my parents were immigrants to this country, and to confuse this speech by somehow saying we welcome people with open arms and a vote against this proposal, maybe anything other than that is a little bit underhand, so let me be clear, I welcome foreigners to live here, work here and where appropriate to vote here, but I'm not one for inequality, and when I get told that four countries out of 27 in the EU have bilateral rights and therefore entitled to vote, I don't think I should automatically give the other 23 countries those rights if those countries will not give our citizens who live there the same equal bilateral rights, that is unfairness, I would rather that our government continues to talk to their governments and says we should have bilateral rights for all, and I would certainly support, if a motion had come here today asking us to approach our government and say, please, redouble your efforts so we have bilateral rights for all, I would have been 100% behind it, but it's not, and I'm all for equality and I'm all for the right people having the right vote, and thank you, and I'm also responsible and want us to be aware of the anti-fraud initiatives contained in this bill that are becoming, unfortunately, over time, we have to move with the times and make sure that the right people vote in the right way for the right people, thank you.
Councillor Tierney.
Thank you, Chairman, I live in a town where something like a quarter to a third of the people have come from overseas to make a new life in England, and we all get along pretty well, obviously there are some difficulties, same with any groups, but everyone rubs along pretty well, and I spend a lot of time talking to them, as you might imagine, as somebody who's a local politician, about elections, particularly at campaign time, and the first thing I would say is that I've never encountered one who's screaming that they don't get the right to vote in a national vote, never, I've encountered many that have been surprised that they have the right to vote in a local vote, they didn't even believe me and I've had to explain, but I do support anything that makes it easier for people to vote, I absolutely support that, I think that's right, except that I'm not convinced it's incredibly difficult now, councils go out of their way to try and make sure that people who are eligible to vote are able to vote, they try to write to them, they try to find them, they send them information so they can sign up to vote, and I know that activists of all parties also attempt to help people to get their right to vote, for whatever reason, but I do think that we're in danger here of taking two different things. In the first hand, I think it's fine that everybody who lives and works and pays taxes here should vote in local elections, no problem with that, but I do think that the national elections are something special, and I do think that they are reserved to citizens and some exceptions that councillor Bowden mentioned earlier, and I think it's great if we can encourage people to come and live here and make a commitment to this country and be a part of this country from elsewhere, I think that's fantastic, anyone who's willing to come and do that and go through the citizen procedure and become a citizen, of course they should have the right to vote, just like every other citizen should, but I do think we need to be careful about just carte blanche saying everybody should vote in our national elections, there's a reason why not many countries do that, and it's because it's something special, and I think that most people recognise that it's something special, whether they vote or not, and so I do think we've got to be a little careful about trying to help people with help they don't actually want, and actually try to instead just encourage more people who've come here to become citizens, to become a full part of the country, which I think is great when they do that, thank you.
Councillor Hoy.
Yeah, thank you, I'm really torn on this motion, to be honest, because I kind of support it and don't support it in another way, so I don't disagree with the logic behind it at all, similar to councillor Tierney, I think you should be able to vote, if you live here and pay council tax, why shouldn't you be able to vote here, wherever you're from, doesn't really matter, and I also personally, I know obviously it's a national party thing, but I personally am not a fan of voter ID, photo ID, because actually we're supposed to be encouraging people to vote, not discouraging it, given how low a turnout we currently have, as has already been mentioned, I don't think photo ID is going to enhance anything, to be honest, of course, I don't agree that there's no fraud, I think it was councillor Prey said there was, or Nick Nesting said there was no fraud, we do all know of evidence of voter fraud that happens, however, I think that could happen under any system, really, I don't necessarily know if photo ID would make a great deal of difference, because, you know, there's still postal votes and proxy votes and various other things, I think if people want to be dishonest, they'll find a way. So I don't know, is the honest answer, I'm just listening to everything I'm hearing, really, before I decide, but I think the truth is, the actual system is quite broken, I think the whole system needs looking at full stop, I don't think the Elections Bill's gone far enough, so for example, one thing I mentioned to our local MP about is, they haven't said anywhere in the Elections Bill whether the EU identity card will count as a national, as photo ID, and it just seems to me that why would it not, you know, it's biometric, and it should do, but it doesn't, and they haven't sort of considered that, and I think that probably almost 100% of the citizens that are already here from EU countries probably have that card, and make them have an expense of applying for a passport or a driving licence when they've already got the ID, seems silly, so, yeah, and that's probably, I've said a lot and said very little at the same time, but I just wanted to explain sort of my views on this subject, because I do find it quite interesting.
Thank you, councillor Bowden.
Thank you, Chair, I just wanted to draw our attention back to the motion itself, we've had a lot of discussion, and I just wanted to remind us that at D, councillor Bullatt simply asks the chief executive to write to the minister of state, asking that the Elections Bill be amended to extend local election voting rights in England and Northern Ireland to all qualifying foreign nationals in line with voting rights in Scotland and Wales, these are rights that those people currently here enjoy, it is simply extending those rights to the same categories of people who would come, who might reasonably expect to have the same privileges, thank you.
So I don't see any other hands, so I think we're going to move to councillor Slatter, a second up.
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to welcome and second this excellent motion, and I want to particularly support recommendation D, we certainly need a fair system for the whole of the UK which recognises the principle of no taxation without representation, I should acknowledge that this is not an original idea of mine, or even a new idea, but it seems we still have to fight for it in the 21st century. Scotland has indeed shown us the way we should be treating our citizens here in England. Trumpington is an increasingly multinational village, and the people making their homes here come from all over the world, however, although the council tax bills arrive on their doorsteps soon after they've finished unpacking, foreign nationals do not have the right to vote for the councillors who will have the responsibility of using those taxes. It is not only shameful that England is lagging behind Scotland, but it is extremely confusing that there are different systems within such a small country. I will welcome the work to be done in response to recommendations A and B, but do not look forward to having to explain to a resident newly arrived from Scotland that although they were eligible to vote for their local councillors there, they are excluded here. Councillor Bowden may prefer to wait for other countries to widen their suffrage before we do, but I don't. It will be more in keeping with the government's vision of global Britain and less reminiscent of George III if we take this opportunity to amend the Elections Bill, as will be suggested by our new chief executive in his letter, please vote for the motion.
Councillor Bullatt, would you like to sum up?
Yes, thank you, Chair, thank you so much for this very interesting debate, I would say, and councillor Slatter for seconding this motion and also highlighting how important this is in her division as well, I'm sure it is important for many of us who live in such diverse areas, I think there's a lot to respond to, a lot of things have been said, some more misleading than others in the debate, so I will pick up on a few points just for clarification before everyone gets a vote on this. On councillor Count's point, this motion is quite clearly, I would say, not against voter ID, I realise there are different arguments for and against voter ID, and of course there are many issues to discuss, including an entire debate on like the voter fraud and how this compares with other countries, or you know, like how big of a problem it is, but the motion itself doesn't position ourselves against voter ID measures, it's about how we actually communicate those changes, which would be very important to communicate so people are able to vote and have access to the right documentation, and I think there's a role that the local councils can play in this, because for the people who don't have easy access to an acceptable form of voter ID, it will actually be local authorities who will be responsible to offer this, so we need as a council and in collaboration with districts to be able to say to the government that we need like adequate funding on this to make sure that people do have the access to vote. Yes, bilateral rights for all, that would be like global rest-based voting rights locally, which I'm totally in favour of, so do join the campaign if you wish, but meanwhile, I think we have to think practically what we can do, and of course, other countries, including, of course, Scotland and Wales, part of the UK, have shown the way on this, that it is possible within our system. Just for clarification, the motion does mention commonwealth voting rights for all elections, so of course I thought it's quite self-explanatory that that wants change, and it mentions specifically that the election, that we welcome that the Elections Bill preserves voting and candidacy rights for EU citizens with pre-settled and settled status who entered before the 1st of January 2021, so we're speaking about what the Elections Bill basically does, to summarise, it just takes away voting rights for EU citizens who arrive after and don't have one of those statuses. Yes, I think this point was already made, it's about local elections only, so councillor Tierney, please do read the motion again, especially the last point, it's not about national elections, we're not debating this, I actually do think it's a separate debate and argument, and how we discuss citizenship and elections in general, but local elections, I think they're about, well, you pay council tax, the local area should be able to have some say, we're not debating decisions on foreign policy or other issues, we're debating decisions that affect local residents, and so thank you so much for everyone who spoke in favour of the motion, one point I will make as well, very briefly, is I don't think the ability to vote should depend on your ability to pay, some people mentioned the citizenship process, the application fee alone for citizenship, which I did a couple of years ago, is £1,330, that's only the application fee, of course, you have to be in the country for a number of years to pass through various stages of immigration process, I don't think the answer is like, well, if you want to vote, if you want to have a say on your bins or your roads, like please do become a British citizen, it's not affordable for everyone, especially for families with children, and it's not, you know, really affordable for everyone, so I don't think we should be based on your ability to pay and become a citizen in that sense. So I don't, I won't add anything else, I think there's a lot to debate on this, it's like a very complex topic, I think the motion is pretty self-explanatory, and I would just say in closing that I think regardless of our political party, we should all try to improve democracy and make local politics something that residents can actually trust more, especially in the current context, I think we need more trust in politics, and actually trust in politics comes through engagement, and if you think about this, engagement cannot really start without having or knowing about your local democratic rights, thank you.
Thank you, so we're going to move to the vote on councillor Bullatt's motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. All those against, please raise your hand. And any abstentions, please. Can you raise your hands if you are against the motion, again, please? And once again, if you abstain, could you please raise your hands?
Chair, the result of the vote is 33 votes in favour, 16 against and 6 abstentions, the motion is therefore carried.
So that's carried, there's been a number of requests for a comfort break, I propose that we adjourn now until 12.30, thank you very much.